Welcome tonight to tonight's community budget briefing conversation. Appreciate you all coming to this session tonight. Tonight's session is a hybrid meeting, so we also want to welcome the folks that are online joining us right now. So I'm Carly Adams. I'm tonight's moderator. And tonight's session is really a chance for you to be able to learn more about the city's budgeting process and next year's budget development. So just a couple of reminders for those of you who may be new here in person, the restrooms are right down the hallway to the right. And also, if you'd like interpretation, that is available, just let us know and we'll provide the interpretation services for you. And as a reminder, as a multilingual space, we want everybody to speak slowly. I will try to remember to do that myself and clearly. And if you have questions, we have green question cards here in person, and I'll hand one of those to you and you can fill that out. And for the folks that are online that are joining us, just a few reminders for you as well. If you want the interpretation, there's a globe at the bottom of the screen and you can select that globe button and select the language that you would like to use. Let's see. And for tonight's agenda, if you're joining online, you can see there in the chat, there will be some information with the agenda and some links as well. And you can use the Q and A feature if you'd like to ask questions. Try to get to those questions after the in-person ones tonight. And then also, after tonight's session, there will be a chance to be able to offer feedback and ask any questions. If you don't think of it during the session tonight, then you can ask questions later as well. So with that, I think that's the last of the housekeeping items, so I'll pass it over to Mayor Beatty for tonight's opening.
Good evening. And the woman in the back who asked if this was in fact a baby in here, it is. It is not a dog or a cat. So this is my three-week-old Vice Mayor Kyra. So she's joining us tonight and she's making some sounds up here. So she will be participating in tonight's meeting. She already has a strong fiscal start, having been through the budget now twice and read it through with me. I want to thank you for joining us tonight, but before we start, I definitely want to thank Carly for being our moderator this evening. When we discussed how we were going to present this information to the community, we knew it'd be really important to have a really skilled, good moderator. And for those that don't know, the city offers amazing services here for if you're having conflict with neighbors or with your landlord. And Carly runs that department for us. So this is kind of like a job performance and sitting in session for us, but she is fantastic at it. So it's one of the many services that the city provides that a lot of people don't know. So it's a great way for us to showcase. I want to thank our staff, our finance team that is here, our city manager Jenny, who came on during a really rocky time in Beaverton's history. As many people know, we changed our form of government. We decided to professionalize the leadership. And when Jenny got on board and started really digging into what our city looked like, the first thing that she brought to me was the, our revenue situation. And really, she's going to go over a lot of those details tonight, that this isn't something that just popped up in the last six months. This is an ongoing trend that we've had for a few years. So our professional city manager brought together a team of people to come to council to talk about the budget situation we're in. How council decided to handle it was put together a fiscal subcommittee. And I'm joined to my right with Councilor Duggar and joining us online is Councilor Hassan. One of the things the mayor often does is make recommendations for subcommittees. And I want you to know that I chose Councilor Duggar and Councilor Hassan for very particular reason. Councilor Duggar, before he was a city councillor, served on our budget committee and served as the chair, so had a really long-going knowledge. And Councilor Hassan is one of our longest-serving city councillors, has a lot of volunteer experience, has an executive-level day job, and so it was kind of the right fit for us to dig in and get together. I want you to know that we have spent hours and hours and hours together, the three of us, with our consultants, with our team, to understand where we were at. And I want you to know that the subcommittee is making recommendations on high level. We're not in the nitty-gritty. We're not talking about individual jobs. We're not talking about that, but more in a concept of with guidance from our professional staff and where we're at. So what you're going to see tonight is a mixture of the subcommittee's recommendations, the city manager's recommendations. They're going to city council tomorrow night for their input. And then the city manager will take everyone's input and come together with our recommended budget for this year. I don't want to sugarcoat it. It's a rough year. This is one of, I've been, this is my ninth budget. This has been one of the hardest years as an elected official, but I want you to know that your elected officials are taking this seriously. You elected us to do hard work, and we know to have a prosperous future, that we need to have interventions right now. So what you're seeing is not doom and gloom, but what you're seeing is a great opportunity for us to think about what the city of Beaverton will look like in the next two, five, and 10 years. And it's the hard decisions today that are going to give us a prosperous future. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to the city manager. And if you like the ideas tonight, they're all mine. If you dislike them, they're Councilor Duggar's.
Well, thank you for, that's a hard act to follow. So tonight, our goal is to give you just a really high level of what the budget entails, what it comprised of, and then really to get focused on what our fiscal challenges are. And hopefully, we can set the table. I really encourage you, and I'll talk a little bit about the end of attending our meeting tomorrow. I think that's going to give you a handle on what are the type of strategies we're looking at, not only for right now, but for the long term. So if we can have a slide deck up, I'd like to run through a couple of slides with you. You probably are going to learn more than you ever wanted to know about the budget process, and we'll definitely take your questions afterwards. All right. So city budgets are organized typically by funds, and I've kind of collapsed these. We actually have a number of funds here, but the troubling fund that we are challenged by is the general fund. And the general fund is typically what I refer to as the most discretionary fund. This is where your property tax goes, and it's also the type of fund where you can spend it pretty much on just about anything. It's not restricted in any way. And this is where I said your property tax goes, which means all of your property tax payments are paid from here for very specific services, and we'll get a little bit into detail about that. But the other funds, and some of them are going to be familiar to you that I want to go through just really briefly, is special revenue funds. So one that might be familiar is a library fund. The library fund is comprised of county funding and a property tax levy that's specific for library services, so I cannot use those revenues for, let's say, police services. They have to be uniquely used for library services. The city also provides about $4.4 million to bridge the gap that those funds that we receive for library is not enough. So your general fund actually contributes to the library fund as well. Another fund that might be familiar to you is what's called the building fund. This is responsible for when we want to issue building, cooling, heating permits, things of that nature. And the building division is responsible for enforcing organ building codes. And the state law pretty much provides guidance on how construction occurs, and so we just can't make those up. There's actually codes that we have to follow by the state. And then last, the streets fund. At the pump, you pay a gas tax, and that gas tax goes into the street fund, and that can only be used for things like street maintenance, curb and gutter, even snow removal to a certain extent. And so you have another, a number of other funds on there besides your special revenue funds. Those are your utility funds. Those sound exactly as they are. They're for water, wastewater, storm, and you can only use those funds that come in for those related expenses. You cannot use those to purchase things that are not related to utilities. Capital projects fund, think about multiple funding sources going to support your large capital infrastructure projects in the city. And then last, your debt service fund. Actually, the city has very little debt, but we do pay debt service on bonds that were issued, for instance, for the public safety center. And that is a tax that's imposed above the state, excuse me, above the property tax that you currently pay, and we issue payments out of that fund. Let's see if this thing wants to go another slide. Not moving. There we go. So general fund revenue. So we receive about $97 million worth of general fund revenue, and surprisingly, only about 42% of $40 million is in property tax, which means that there's about 58% of a whole bunch of different revenue that comes in that we really don't have a whole lot of control over. Property taxes are based on assessed valuation for both residential and commercial properties, so new and existing, and that's determined by the city's levy rate and as well as state law. And the remaining 58 is from another kind of hodgepots of a variety of funds, and I want to go through some of them. They may be familiar to you. So right-of-way fees. So think about when utilities want to use the city's street infrastructure or other assets, they have to pay a fee. Sometimes it could be considered like a lease for use, and so cable, water, natural gas, utilities of that nature, they're responsible for paying us fees for the right-of-way. We receive a lot of intergovernmental revenue. We have arrangements and agreements with neighboring cities, so that's another part of that pie up there, as well as grants and what are called intergovernmental agreements. Or we have state shared revenue as well that makes up that pie. We have interest income, which is actually a very small sliver, and even just as small, there's things like permits and fees for service. So if you are a business and you want to set up shop, you need a business license. You need to pay the city a fee for that. If you are a commercial developer and you want to build a manufacturing building, or if you are a private developer and you want to build residential homes, you have to come in and pay, go through a land use application and pay fees for that. And so those fees for service actually are triggered by volume and the amount, and they'll fluctuate each year depending on the level of activity, which we don't control. But we do control setting fees, and so we'll talk a little bit about that later. But they don't make a huge lot of that pie, and so my point in sharing this with you is that much of the revenue that we received is actually not property tax by looking at that pie. So that's really important as we talk a little bit later about where your property tax dollar is spent. And then I guess last, I would just mention really quickly, fines and forfeitures, so court citations, fines of that nature, that also goes into the general fund. And you might be curious what like intergovernmental or interfund, excuse me, transfers are. Sometimes the general fund will provide support or oversight over other funds. We get reimbursed for that. We don't pay, just allow the general fund to just do that. So if we're helping out a utility fund, then we get reimbursed accordingly. And so those interfund transfers will take care of that, as well as receive funding like pandemic relief. So the American Rescue Plan Act might be a great example. And I'll refer to that as ARPA because I may talk about that a little bit later. So this is an important graphic that I think you should all kind of keep in your mind because when you look at your property tax bill, a lot of times people think that they're paying all of this money to just the city of Beaverton, when actually, we get very little of your dollar. And I want to talk a little bit about how much we receive and then how much we share that dollar with a lot of other jurisdictions. So the city receives about 21 cents for every dollar that you spend in property tax. And that's not a whole lot, and that's because it's shared with a number of other agencies. So right up there is the Beaverton Urban Renewal Agency. Those are the acronym B U R A, BURA. And you get about two cents is spent on that, and that money is invested in the central Beaverton area and downtown, and that's primarily what we would call a tax increment. So that's the growth in property tax less what we're paying on existing taxes that are collected, and that is just for that area, and that's all the investments that you're seeing happening in the downtown. And then besides that, you have the county that has another 14 cents, and they, of course, do human and social services. And then a large chunk of it is 38 cents, and that's to the school district, and you can see that's a pretty sizable part of that dollar bill. And then you have parks, which is known as THPRD, or it's known as Twelton Harris Park and Rec. That's about eight cents. And then you have TVFNR, which is our fire district. There are 10 cents. Metro, if you're not familiar with Metro, Metro provides regional governance on a variety of things, from land use to zoo to the convention center to recycling and solid waste. And then you have just a miscellaneous five cents. I don't have the detail here on that, but my point is, is that your dollar is shared with a lot of other agencies, and so we only get 21 cents to provide core services to you. And we'll get into that a little bit later on these slides when we look at what our expenditures are and then where they're going. So again, so we have $97 million in revenue that comes in. Well, that 97 million goes out. So where does it go? So the majority of it, about 40% is spent on police. So we respond about nearly 80,000 calls a year, and that's why your police number is so high in terms of cost. It also, when you pay for a police officer, you're not only paying for the body to provide service, but you're also paying for everything that goes with it. So think about all the equipment that's required, the vehicle that goes with it, the place of business, all of that dispatch, all of that goes into public safety, which really is predominantly the most important and most expensive expense in a general fund for most cities, because it does cost quite a bit to deliver that type of service. But following that, we have a number of other expenditures. So development and planning is another one. So a couple of things to think in mind when you think about development and planning, current and long-range planning. So if you think about Cooper Mountain is underway, we're planning that. Those are where those planning activities are occurring. South Cooper Mountain is just starting to wrap up. And I just told, was told, just point the clicker at Jessica's computer. All right, that's helpful. Some other things are, in terms of planning, site development, you might be wondering what that is. That has to do with like tree removal, there's sidewalk repair, utility connections. So when people need to make new connections, they got to cut into the street and curb and sidewalk. Zoning is another really big thing for planning and development. If you all in here can look at those maps, those are zoning maps, and that tells you where things can be built and where they can't be built. So where commercial properties can be built, where residential properties can be built, where open space should be. Another important service is city services with respect to engagement. So we actually support over, or actually about 11 different neighborhood associations throughout the city, so Sexton Mountain, West Slope, Greenway, Central Beaverton. Those might sound familiar. Those are all what are called our NACs. And on top of that, we also support 17 boards and commissions. So that's a pretty significant heavy lift in terms of engagement, wanting to make sure that the community is engaged, and so a lot of our funding goes there. Landscaping, engineering services. We have our own municipal court, which also is a sizable expense, so we have traffic offenses, low-level criminal offenses are handled there. And then you have your regular administration, which would be your city manager's office, your attorney, your human resources and finance, just for an example, your council, and then your contingency that's listed there. And a contingency, that's your rainy day fund, and you probably would not want to be spending money out of there unless you absolutely have to, and that's our approach as well. And then as I mentioned, what's not listed on here is the subsidy for the library, which is about $4.4 million, and that's typically probably a transfer out of revenue, so you won't see it on your expenditures. You might also be really curious, are you going to advance it or should I just stop? Okay, that sounds great. So this is probably where we're going to do the most explanation, because following trend lines is going to be a little bit tricky. So when we look at this, I'll tell you that it tells us that we have a lot to do, because our expenses are basically not in alignment with our revenues, is really what this chart shows us. So I want to orient you to the top part of the graph really quickly. So that top green horizontal line is the revenues, and the blue line are the expenditures. And so if you advance the slide one click, we're going to circle up on that top peak, and that's in fiscal year ending '22. The city had a deficit or a shortfall, and this shows the actual numbers. And the reason why it's peaking up there like a tent is that's where our ARPA monies or our American Rescue Act monies came in, and then they were expended out, so that's why it looks like that. And basically, all those funds, by the way, those are all pushed out to either the community or to small businesses, and then we're also able to rely on those to shore up our shortfall in the current year. And I'll talk a little bit about that in a second. So that shows you that we already had a deficit during the pandemic, and then that deficit continued into the current year, and that's fiscal year, year ending '23, and that is an adopted budget, so that is what we adopted. We'll know those actual numbers by the end of this fiscal year. Unfortunately, we were able to close that gap with about $6 million from ARPA funding. So we were not able to, we didn't have to draw down on our reserves, and that's what you want to avoid doing. You don't want to use reserves for ongoing expenses. You want to use them when you have to, or for very intentional investments. And so if you look where the dotted lines are starting to split apart on there, and if you click again, we'll have those circled for you. That shows you, and those are for next year's budget numbers, that tells you that basically we're projecting a $10 million shortfall, and those numbers, if they're not corrected, they're going to continue to widen, and you don't want that to happen. So we're going to talk about how we make those corrections. But I want you to take a look at the bottom trend lines. Those ones are showing what's called our fund balance, or what I'll refer to as your reserves. So I'll orient you to the slide. So purple is good. That is our target. It's about 11% of expenditures that you want to have in the bank for your rainy day or for like your own home savings account. That equates to about $10.6 million, and we're fairly close to that. We're not quite on there, and that's our goal, is we want to be on the target. But you'll notice that kind of, you know, gray-black line starts shooting downwards. That's if we continue to go on the path that we're going, and if we do not make any permanent structural changes, that's what happens. So that's not, but we're going to fix that. But that is the worst-case scenario. So this is why I'm going to, the mayor was talking about, we're going to have to make some really hard decisions. If we continue to make decisions that are one-time in nature and we kick the can, that's what our scenario looks like. So our goal is to reverse that. So we're staying on track, and we're in alignment with that purple line, and it doesn't look like that black-gray line going downwards. So if you go to the next slide, you're probably going to wonder, well, how the heck did we get here? So let's talk a little bit about that. If you click on for the slide one, I want to talk about these years that I've circled right here. So for several years in 2017, 18, and 19, this is all pre-pandemic, our expense line, which is that blue line, was on top of the green line, and that shows that we really had some small deficits going into the pandemic. And once the pandemic hit, everything got further exacerbated. And so you can see that on the onset of fiscal year ending '22, and if you can click the space one more time, you can see that we're already in a place where our expense lines are outpacing our revenue at the top. And then if you look at the bottom, you definitely can see we've got some projections, if not course-corrected, that we're going to drop below our target purple line there. So while cities were laying off during the pandemic, we did a couple of things differently. We maintained our services. We pushed out city funding to small businesses to keep the local economy going. We also wanted to make sure that we were creating as much stability as we could during that year, but we can't do that in perpetuity, and some of those good efforts also start to catch up with you. So now we need to course correct. The other issue is that during this time, what happened? We had inflation hit. We had 6%, 8% inflation. So what does that do? That impacts our salaries, our benefits, our costs for supplies. We have supply chain issues. Our equipments and vehicles are a lot more. So it really created a domino effect with our expenses. So what was once a small deficit is now a large deficit. So next slide. So as the mayor was talking about to you earlier when she was welcoming you, is that we really wanted to take this seriously. We used this last year to help us think about how can we can intentionally address the issue that's before us. We formed a fiscal sustainability subcommittee, and those members are here today. And we've been using our time with fiscal experts to try to create a sustainability kind of glide path and to give us the softest landing that we can as we kind of course-correct our future. And so what we're going to do is we're going to talk a little bit about kind of, well, what does that look like, and why should I care, and how that's going to impact the community? And then again, tomorrow, we're going to get into a level of detail on strategies and what we're going to have to do over the short and the long term to really see those lines get into alignment. Next slide. All right. So what does this mean for you? So the first thing is, is that we're, one, in the process of finalizing the budget, and we're anticipating that we will have some service impacts. And so what does that mean? So while the budget hasn't yet been finalized, I can tell you to expect that programming may need to change. It may shrink. It may be eliminated. We may have shorter hours or service hours reduced in some cases, slower response times, and that could be across city services. But we're also going to have to need to consider something else, and that includes revenue changes as well. And this is probably the hardest part of the conversation, because in looking at our property tax, we've only changed the property tax eight cents in the past decade. And so I want to share a little bit of numbers with you to kind of orient you, so you know exactly how much you pay as a taxpayer. So the voter-approved property tax max is $4.61 per assessed thousand, and right now, the Beaverton tax rate's $4.22, which means that we have about 39 cents left on the cap to think about using. So if property tax were adjusted, and if the council decided to do that, on average, the impact would be about $10 per family per month. And so I recognize that that could be significant for many of our community members, and so we want to look at this holistically. And so one of the other sides of the coin that we're looking at is our fees, and we want to make sure that development and larger businesses and visitors are also paying their fair share. So it's important that we do a comprehensive fee study. We have that planned for the next year so that we can adjust fees accordingly, and those fees haven't been adjusted probably between five to 10 years. So we have a little bit of work to do to make sure that our fees are reflective of inflation today. The amount that it costs to actually provide those services is really important. We recognize that you are on our first stop. We want to make sure that we're looking at all different places so that people are all paying their fair share, but we also want to make sure that we're deeply looking at the other side of the coin, which is reducing our expenditures significantly and trying to do things in the most efficient way. So examining every position that comes up, finding out how we can consolidate services as much as we can while still maintaining the level of service that you're used to. Next slide. And this, I would say, is actually one of the most important slides, because tomorrow we have the strategies conversation with the council. That's at 6 o'clock in this room. I'd really encourage for those that are here or those that are watching to attend. And then we have three other opportunities for you to learn and listen and to weigh in. May 9th and 23rd, those are your budget committee meetings. Those are very important. You're really going to get into the nuts and bolts of the budget and understand where the service impacts will be. And then the last is the public hearing, June 6th. This is where the council can take their last final action. They could have a potential another public hearing on the 20th if we need to extend it, but right now, we're focusing on the 6th. And then we also created a site for you to go to to kind of share either your questions, your ideas, beavertonoregon.gov/budget. So I really encourage you to drop some information in that site as well, and we take all of that very seriously, all of that. We will get back to you if you have the opportunity to give us your contact information, but if you have ideas or suggestions or just have some simple questions, don't hesitate to drop us a line through that opportunity there. And with that, we also want to pause to answer any questions. I have Debbie Lautner. She is our finance director. She's joining me to answer, she's going to be the phone-a-friend for me if I don't know the answer to your questions. So I'll just pause there, because I know this was a lot of information. You mean, want to take a break to absorb it all, and we hope to answer your questions.
Yeah.
Well, I just wanted to check in. Thank you all. That was a fair amount of information, and to see if anyone here has any questions, either if something you've already written down or given our sites here tonight, they said it's fine, pass the mic and you can just ask your questions. So are there questions coming in here? No, we have one coming in from online. I can go ahead and take that. Shannon. So the first question here, has the impact of change in form of government been accounted in the budgeting process? And how has it been, how has it led to potential shortfall? And there's a second question here, how has the change impacted the budget process?
Well, I guess I'll take the last part first. I think the change in the budget process has actually been for the good. I think that having a professional manager working with the council allows for a lot more level of transparency in the process, and that's actually to the benefit of the community. A lot of these things that didn't necessarily come up in the past are now coming up now, and so I think having this conversation is kind of indicative of that. In terms of the impact of the form of government, of course, there's going to be impacts. Anytime you change a form of government, I could cite the city of Portland, for example. So I think that that's kind of par the course, but in terms of that being a cause or a driver of a shortfall, I would say that that's kind of a very small amount in terms of what we're looking at. $10 million is a significant amount of money, and a lot of that has to do with impact on services over time and revenues and really constraints of revenue. It does not mean that that's a driver of a form of government. I think it's coincidental that it happened at the, kind of the same time or juncture, but they're not related.
Thank you, Jenny. Just give folks a chance and grab the one second here. All right. Well, we did have some questions come in already, so I'll go ahead and go with those, and then if you think of a question, just raise your hand and I'll come around. So we have a few questions here. Let's see. What budget reductions have already been implemented to help?
So when we did our baseline budget, we made sure that each of the departments were not including things or adjustments that were made during the budget year, so we were trying to right-size the baseline budget. Different reductions were already being made as a part of that process, but much smaller ones, ones that are not going to necessarily affect service reductions. Think about things as small as travel and train. We also are looking at our fleet. So maybe replacement cycles for vehicles and equipment are also ways to be able to save money. We also looked at some of our, for instance, things related to our police and how we do our photo radar vans and trying to reduce and shore up expenditures there. And so the real work came with developing what are called 5%, 7%, and 10% scenario reductions, which we worked with our department heads to submit. And that is where we're doing the real budget work. And so that level of detail is not going to be offered in this conversation this evening, but on the 9th and the 23rd because that budget is not yet published.
I think it's also important to recognize that voters in Beaverton have chosen very deliberately to have special districts. We have a special district fire. We have a special district park. We have a special district water. And Beaverton has had a bit of a reputation over the last couple of years of kind of doing more than our fair share and kind of wading into what some of our special districts do, creating a lot of redundancy. So the city manager and I have worked really closely about talking about redundancy with other levels of government. We have lots of conversations we've had in the past that we're going to continue to have around events, around space. How do we work with other governments to deliver to our community? Because it's not like Beaverton does it all on its own. We have amazing partners that, as you saw in your tax dollars, is taxing quite a bit in our community as well. And so maybe in the past, we did a lot of things out of convenience because the city wanted to be the center of it. Now we're moving towards what our voters have asked us for, which is really high-quality services and they don't honestly care who they come from. And so when we can check ego at the door and bring in our partners together, we're going to have a lot better outcomes. And so part of what you guys saw in the reduction the city manager was talking about, it was also really looking at what are we doing that other governments are already doing? Are they doing it better? And can we join forces to deliver something to our community? So those conversations have been happening all in the last six or seven months as we've been talking about the budget as well. And it's important to know that we have looked under every rock. If there was a magic pot of money, we would have already found it. And what you see is we have gone through all of those easy, low-hanging fruit situations to be where we are today.
Yeah, I would add one thing though, just to share a little bit more about what the mayor was saying when, you know, we've looked under every rock. So at this point, we're cutting on the bone, which means that there's nowhere else to go but really deepening those cuts to services. And I can tell you, having been in the finance world for a long time, Debbie as well, that when you're there, that's where you've got to make some significant decisions. And so we don't take this very lightly. And so some of the opportunities that we'll have in talking with you tomorrow evening and through the budget process is to really talk about how we're going to pivot and get through some of those discussions when we are at the bone. And so I think that this is where it's really important for you that are listening and television are here tonight, is to think really deeply about what that means when we're having to do service cuts because it does take people to provide services and we are in the people business as a city.
Thank you. A couple more questions that came in is, in addition to the general fund, how many, are there other city funds that have budget challenges or shortfalls?
Yes. So I mentioned the library fund. The library fund actually has been struggling for some time and the existing funds that we receive through the county and through the property tax levy for library services actually hasn't quite been enough and we've been trying to stretch that dollar, hence why the city general fund pitches in to try to make services whole. The amount that we're projecting to receive next year from the external sources is not going to be enough. There's actually going to be a slight reduction. So we're really going to have to try to make things work and think more creatively in how we deliver library services. I will tell you that if you want to order of magnitude, we've been probably running a deficit of about $1 million in that fund. And so we're working to correct that and we'll talk a little bit about that through the budget process. That's one significant fund. The other that I would mention is our street fund. So this is the street fund that provides street maintenance. In order to maintain what's called a pavement condition index, it's PCI, you want a high level. Think about it like, oh, I got 100% on my test. That's great. Well, you want to stay, you know, anywhere between the 70s and 90s, right? To have good roads. And we have a pretty good PCI index right now, albeit we have some roads that could use some work. But to maintain that level takes about $7 million annually. We're not contributing near that at all. And so that is going to be something that the council and I are going to tackle over the next couple of years of how we can address that. And those are things that have long-term impacts. So think about in five to 10 years, if we did nothing, your roads would not be very drivable. And so that's something that's significant that we'll have to address in the next year or two as well.
Thank you. Another question here came in from online. The number 42 million seems low for income taxes considering we have some major companies that call Beaverton home, like Nike, Columbia, et cetera. How are we making sure they are paying their fair share?
So Nike is in the county pocket, so it's not in the city, so we don't receive revenue from them. We do receive revenue from large businesses, but again, we do, we can also audit those numbers as well. I can tell you that one of the issues is that property tax rate is not divided up fairly. So for instance, what we receive for a multi-house, housing property is not the same as what you would get for a single-family housing. And so rates are not all applied differently and that's because of the state tax or state law. So that we don't control. I can tell you though, through, when we go through this process of talking about different types of levy opportunities, we'll look at what paying your fair share is, but we also have to have the conversation on our fees as well and making sure that we're not penalizing small businesses for the sake of large businesses too. So I think there's a little bit of an art versus a science on that conversation. Again, that's why I really want to encourage you to tune into tomorrow's conversation where we're going to talk more about that.
And I think it's important to mention as well, we have one of the highest rates of multifamily housing in the area. About 50% of our community resides in multifamily housing and we have some of the least commercial and industrial land compared to like maybe the city of Hillsborough. And so those things are contributing, even though we're similar sized cities, they outpace us in revenue because of those two factors. And it costs a lot of money to deliver services to households compared to businesses. So we're hit through multiple areas. We have a lot of multifamily housing. We have a lack of industrial and commercial land, which is why when you hear elected officials talk about commercial land, we're not super excited about always building housing on top of it because it costs a lot more to deliver services and we don't, we're not able to collect as much revenue. So cities really need to have that balance of commercial space, industrial space, single-family homes, when we start looking at the pie. So Beaverton's hit a lot harder than Tiger and Hillsborough because of the way that our demographics look. And that's wonky and hard to understand, but when we're in a $10 million shortfall, those starting to become some really important things for us to talk about. And unfortunately, we can't change the state tax code. That is in the constitution. It's really hard to do. Elected officials all over the state would love to be able to collect more on property revenue. There are lots of conversations going on about that, but nothing is going to happen in the time that we need to shore up our shortfall.
Thank you. Another question here, what kind of budget amount range for this fiscal year?
In terms of general fund?
Not actually sure. That's, that was, the question said, what kind of budget amount? This was one that came in from online, so.
Well, I mean, the order of magnitude I can share is that our general fund right now is 97, so it will probably be somewhat higher than that, but I'm not sure. Do we have any projections yet? Not at this moment?
Not at this moment, no.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I thought I saw a hand, but I'm going to go back to some of these questions that have come in already. Are workplace reductions being considered? Will these be full-time staff or primarily temporary positions?
So part of the scenario planning that we were undergoing included workforce reductions and that is kind of the gamut. So it could be from a full-time to a part-time person. It could be temporary hours that we typically have expended for, so it's a variety. But yeah, there will be, there will be impacts to people, unfortunately.
Okay. A couple more questions here. Why hasn't the city activated a hiring freeze?
So actually, the city has a soft hiring freeze in place. And one of the misnomers is that people will say, well, just don't hire anybody and that corrects your problem. Well, actually, if you went ahead and did that, you'd kind of cut yourself off at the knees because the people that we wouldn't hire, that means that your services would be impacted. So we have to go through a filtering process to look at that position and determine, is that core? Is it essential? Is it important or is it a nice to have? And really determine whether we can wait and hold on that position or whether, for instance, no, this is a really important position, for instance, in planning because we have many mandated requirements through the state that we have to meet, so we cannot cut that position. But maybe perhaps there's something else that we could slow walk and rethink and do differently. And actually, we have pivoted and done a number of those changes where we haven't filled a position or we filled it in a different way. So a soft hiring freeze is what I would say we have in place, not a hard and fast hiring freeze.
Thank you. We have one more question here and I want to make sure anybody has a chance to ask questions if you've thought of something. So just raise your hand. If, what are we doing now to make sure this doesn't happen again in the future?
That's, that is a million-dollar question. I think we are doing everything we can on the expenditure side right now, absent of really reducing services. Our goal is to maintain what we have and I think that's the most important thing, but I think there's two sides of the coin. We have to look at both expenditures and reductions and as well as revenues. And so this is going to be a joint effort with the community and I think city leadership to figure out where that sweet spot is in the middle. And part of tomorrow's conversations are going to be just around that. How do we figure out, you know, what do we need to look at more deeply on the expenditure side? And then where's the appetite for things on revenues? Whether it's taxes, whether it's fees, or whether it's something more creative.
All right. Thank you. And just as a reminder, if there's questions that come up after this session, that there will be an opportunity to be able to ask those questions, both in, if you follow the links there online or if you go to the website, there will be a place to ask additional questions and have some FAQs provided as well. So I think that's with it. Those are the questions that we have. If we have others, they'll be answered there online. That, oh, oh, we have one more? Oh, okay. One, everybody hold tight. Okay, one more question. Thank you. Let's see here. Last question here. If the city's going to make cuts, then why does the mayor have to assistance? I was under the impression that she's an extension of the city council and we are no longer in a strong mayor system. This seems like we can, something we can cut. What's the explanation for these positions?
I'll take that. So if you've read the charter, the charter is actually really creative and different. We do have a council manager from a government, but the charter also speaks to having a full-time mayor. And while the full-time mayor doesn't necessarily have authority, it's a full-time mayor that is designed to represent the city from a communication standpoint, from a political standpoint, from an emergency management standpoint. So the mayor speaks on behalf of the council and speaks for the council when the council body has made a particular decision or policy, policy decision rather. And so by that de facto, in that role, there's going to be staff that's required to support that role. And so the council, when the charter was initiated and passed, opted to create support staff to support that role. And that's why we have those two positions there. I will tell you that those two positions work in tandem with city staff to deliver services, so they are an integral role to that. But we are, we are functioning in the structure of the charter and those are decisions that the council certainly can reexamine and determine if they want to go course correct and do something different. But I can tell you from my experience, that is how those positions are being used and it's by design from the charter. And I don't know if any of the council members would like to say anything, but that's really my, my perspective and my experience.
I'll just say, I've been an elected official for quite a long time. I'm here three weeks after giving birth. This job is intense and it's relentless at times and having support staff make sure that I could be the best that I could be for the city. And yeah, I think the city manager had a lot to say about that, but just my scheduling alone requires a full-time FTE to support me with how many people want the mayor to attend events. And we also do a lot of support of our city council. And the city council actually has a support person assigned to them as well. And so it just takes people to support people to do the good work of the city.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And I think with that, then we'll pass back for the closing remarks.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much for joining us today. You know, when I decided to run for mayor and I think I could speak on behalf of the council when they wanted to run, what we didn't think we would be doing was talking about a budget shortfall. We wanted to talk about the amazing things that we told the community we were going to do when we ran for office. I think all elected officials want to do really great work. And as a reminder, elected officials have two main roles in government. It's to set policy and to manage the budget. And unlike the federal government, we don't get to run a deficit. We have to ensure our budget is successful every, every year, that we close it and we live within our means. And I want you to know that the council has taken the job of managing our finances incredibly serious. We created the subcommittee. We hired the best city manager we could find. We brought in the best staff to support these decisions. And we're a government in change. We punch above our weight class. We're not just a regional player. We play at state-level politics, federal politics. We are fantastic at bringing in federal funds to our city for advocating for our people that live here and work here. Yeah, we have a lot of great businesses that call Beaverton home and they employ our community members, our neighbors. Even, you know, the city is one of the number one employers of our district. We want to strive to be a community that everyone is seen and heard. And we're taking that job seriously. Having to go through an exercise of what is nice to have, what is need to have and what is essential services is what families do every single payday. We're not exempt from that responsibility as an elected official. And so what I want you to know is that we're accessible. You can email us. All of us have our email addresses public on the city website.